And, excuse me, is the approval of the January ninth, two thousand and eighteen agenda. I'd like to throw out something to commissioners. If you look at items B one and two, they're both for North Crossing Limited. And I'm wondering if anybody would object to just combining those two? Okay. Okay. So we'll need a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Next item is the Budget Performance Report, or the Financial Report, for November two thousand and seventeen. Noel, you wanted to address that?
Can we do minutes on agenda?
I'm sorry. Next item is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December fifth, two thousand and seventeen.
There might need to be a correction.
Okay.
On the minutes where it says no oral presentations, and it talks about the hearings and rezones of the last agenda, and it said it was moved by Flynn and seconded by Do Not, but in the second line of that, it says, "Motion carried unanimously and do not declare the hearing open." Well, you were...
Oh, that would be me.
Yeah. And there might be a few, just kind of typo errors throughout that just might need to be corrected.
Typos like misspelling of words?
Yeah, like, down here, a little bit farther in the minutes, it's like, "Too," you know, too much, too much larger.
Oh, should be "T-O" instead of "T-O-O."
Yeah, that kind of stuff.
Okay. All right. Any other?
Not to what I'm aware.
Okay. There are none. We'll need to have a motion to approve the agenda, or I'm sorry, the minutes as corrected.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Now we go on to the Financial Report.
This is Anderson with staff. The Financial Report in front of you is from November two thousand and seventeen, so that puts us about forty-two percent of the way through the year. As you can see, going down through the revenue, there's some portions where we're at twenty-six percent, but we have some, those are rent and property leases, so sometimes it depends on when they come in through the year. Other areas, we're at fifty percent or above, where some things are ahead of where they should be, such as salary reimbursement, which is our contract work for the county, recording and publication fees. Other areas, sale of property, we're down a little bit, but we have some pending property sales coming through. On the expense side, we're at forty-three percent, so right about where we should be at this time of the year. We will be having to look at a couple of items. I notice our postage and mailing's at sixty-three percent, so we'll be watching that as, and of course, that's dependent upon the number of items coming in, but we'll be watching some of those items.
Okay.
This is Flynn, just wondering, under subscriptions, it's at a hundred and twenty-two percent, so...
That's another one I circled, too, to check on, to see why we would be above a hundred percent, since we have planned subscriptions for the year, so we'll check that.
Thank you.
Yeah, my only question was, the, down here under revenue totals, was twenty-seven percent, and looks like we were at forty-two percent of our expenses.
Yeah, and again, some of that, like the expenses, especially like some of the insurance and things like that, all come out at the beginning of the year, so you can see, like, the employee benefit reimbursements at eighty-nine percent already, because it all comes out at the beginning, so it'll be a higher amount. Whereas, again, with some of the, with some of the revenue, you know, we had the pending sale of the central garage is a large one that'll be coming in as a percentage to raise that back up, so...
Okay. All right. So that's not something to be alarmed about?
No, not this time.
All right. Excuse me. So we need a motion to place on file of the Financial Report for November of two thousand and seventeen?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that's carried. Now we come to the time for oral presentations. This is time for presentations by citizens on items that are not on today's agenda. And before we go any further, I would like to point out that the sub, proposed subdivision Buzz Anderson is proposing by Orange School, has been pulled from the agenda for today, so if anybody is here to speak about that, you're welcome to talk about it now, or you can come back when it's, when it's on the agenda, and I do apologize for that. Anyway, if anyone would like to speak on something that's not on the agenda, please come to the microphone, give us your name and your address, and state your case. Okay, seeing no one, we'll move on to new business. The first item is a special permit, request by Josu and Rebecca Rivera for a special permit to allow urban animal hobby farm with four sheep located at twenty-two fourteen Avon Avenue. We have a staff report.
And what page is that on?
This is Wes from the staff.
Okay, this is a request for, by the applicant, for a special permit for urban animal hobby farm that would allow them to keep four sheep to operate a hobby farm on two acre parcel within city limits. It would appear the request would, could have a negative impact on the area. The surrounding land is zone for residential use, and allowing a farm could negatively impact the development of the surrounding parcels. To the north, there are single-family homes, Zone R two. To the east, there are single-family homes and vacant lots, Zone R two, one and two family residence district. To the west, single-family homes, vacant lots, Zone R two, one and two family residence district. And to the south, there's two acre parcels, Zone R two, single-family residence district. The site in question is a residential two acre lot. There's a mix of existing single-family and large vacant lots surrounding the property in question. Staff feels that there's a good chance that the vacant lots in the area will be built upon at some point. The area is not in a flood plain. As far as public, open spaces and schools, Cloverdale Park is one quarter mile to the southeast of the property in question. The property in question is served by all major utilities. The City of Waterloo recently adopted an urban animal hobby farm. Breviation is UAHF, Urban Animal Hobby Farm. Regulations which states that the UAHF shall be allowed within city limits on lots or parcels of land as an accessory use to the principal dwelling when several criteria are met. To be allowed to have a large intermediate-sized animals, such as sheep, a minimum confined area, fenced confined area of forty thousand square feet for the first two animals, and twenty thousand square feet for each additional animal in the side or rear yard only is required. There shall be a ten-foot setback of the fenced confined area from neighboring property lines for a UAHF containing any large or intermediate-sized animals, and said fenced confined area for all UAHFs shall not be located in the front yard. The applicant is requesting to have four sheep, which would require eighty thousand square feet of minimum fence or confined area. The site in question is a two acre parcel where the applicants reside. The area dedicated to sheep is approximately sixty thousand, sixty-seven thousand five hundred and eighteen square feet, twelve thousand four hundred and eighty-two square feet short of the eighty thousand minimum required square feet to have four sheep. Of the sixty-seven thousand five hundred and eighteen square feet of fenced area, four thousand fifty square feet is in the front yard, which is not allowed. The applicant has an existing fence that meets the minimum height requirement of five feet, but does not meet the minimum setback requirement of ten feet surrounding the confined area. Along the Northerly property line, the fence has a six-foot setback, an eight-foot setback along the Easty Lee property line, four feet, four-foot setback along the Sutherly line, and ten-foot setback along the Westerly property line along Avon Avenue. But is within the front yard area between Avon Avenue and the front of the home. The site also has a four hundred and forty square foot barn built in nineteen seventy-eight, and a two hundred and forty square foot hay building built in nineteen fifty. The applicant is requesting variances to the minimum density requirement, the minimum fence setback requirement, and a variance to allow for a portion of the front yard to be used for the confinement area. Staff recommends denial of the request as submitted, however, would support a request for three sheep, as it would meet density requirements. Staff is opposed to the variance to, variances to the fence setback, shut that window, variances to the fence setbacks, given the location and surrounding uses. Therefore, staff recommends that the request for a special permit to allow an urban animal hobby farm with four sheep generally located at twenty-two fourteen Avon Avenue Road be denied for the following reasons. The area dedicated to the sheep is twelve thousand four hundred and eighty-two square feet short of the required minimum fence or confined area of eighty thousand square feet to allow for four sheep. However, staff recommends approval for a special permit to allow an urban animal hobby farm with three sheep generally located at twenty-two fourteen Avon Avenue for the following reasons. The request would meet the density requirements of the newly passed urban animal hobby farm regulations.
I have a question for you, Chris. If you take into account the, not only the elimination of the fenced in area that is front yard, but if you take into account the setback requirements, are they still going to have enough, enough square footage for three sheep?
Yes, they would have enough area for, for three sheep.
Even if they set the fences back?
Yes, they very easily could move the fences to a ten-foot setback and still have enough square footage.
Still have sixty thousand? Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
In the captions for the images that are provided with the packet, it talks about goats. Are we talking sheep, or are we talking goats?
Well, originally, there was a little bit of past information. Originally, it was a year ago or so, they wanted approximately twelve goats, and we obviously tabled that to give staff time to come up with a new hobby farm regulation. And so now we have a new one, and we're recommending three.
Of the goats or the sheep?
Sheep.
Just the sheep?
She changed it to sheep. It used to be goats, now it's sheep.
Okay. They just use the same.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
I do. Well, we spent a lot of time, in fact, when I first got on this commission, we were in the midst of, in the midst of talking about hobby farms, and had been before my time, obviously, but we spent a lot of time working on what we do have for the ordinance, or whatever we want to call this, and one of the things that it said in there is nothing in the front yard. I was there this afternoon, and it's not the front yard of the house, but it's the front yard right next to Avon. So, to me, that's part that we should disallow, if, if I'm reading our ordinance correctly.
So specifically, what area of the yard are you talking about?
Okay, so, here's the house, looking at the house, right next to it, the fence comes clear out to the, almost to the street.
So you're talking south of the property?
I'm not a farmer, so I...
Okay, so south of the property, if it goes all the way to that red line along Avon, that goes out past the front of the house, which is the required front yard, so it is the front yard.
Right. So, why are we allowing, why, why are you not objecting to that part, I guess?
Well, that particular part, they're probably have to seek a variance for, to be in the front yard.
That is part you're objecting to, isn't it?
Yes.
That's what I'm, yeah, that's the, that's part of it that I'm objecting to.
Yeah, we spelled it all in there, you can't be in the front yard.
Right, so you're saying it can't?
So they're gonna, they're, they're gonna have to bring the fence into compliance, is that correct?
Unless the board grants a variance.
Okay, because then, your request, the main thing that you said was request would meet the density requirements, which to me meant...
I absolutely agree with you, and I'm pretty certain that was in there to begin with, but yes, we are, to clarify, we do not want sheep or any kind of animal confinement areas in the front yard, and we want the, the request to meet the density requirements, and we also want to have the fences meet the minimums, ten-foot side yard setback.
Right, okay.
So that could be a second question?
So, that, yeah, I think that almost needs to be something added to, if we were, if we were going to discuss voting on it.
I agree.
Yeah, should be in there.
And this is Flynn, I mean, to me, this doesn't make sense that we're saying staff recommends it because it meets it, but according to our own ordinance, it doesn't meet it without the variances, so how can we say we meet it without variances?
Well, I think the density requirements is something that we were really concerned about. The fence does, does sit a number of feet off of the property line, and so, I guess, more specifically, we could have said, we're okay with leaving the fence in place, but we do not, we do not recommend having the animals in the front yard. Otherwise, I think we're okay with it.
But if it, if we don't move the fence, then does it have the required square feet?
Yes, that's what we talked about just a little bit ago.
If we do move the fence, it still has the required square feet?
Yes, because, as I stated in the staff report, the north line is like six foot, and then the east line is eight feet, and then along Avon, it actually meets the ten foot. So they will still meet the density requirements regardless of they move the fence ten feet off the line.
It meets the ten foot on Avon, but the fence is still in the front yard. So if I'm reading correctly, you said something in here about four thousand fifty square feet is the front yard, which is not allowed, and that's all the way across the property?
That's just along the front, from the front of the wall, the wall of the house to Avon, the property along, along Avon, that area there, south of the garage, would be the required front yard.
That's the area that we're talking about, yeah, that's not, okay, because, yeah, I was out there this afternoon as well, and I noticed that, too, that...
Yeah. And then I do have one other quick question, and up back, right after general description, you said, "It would appear that the request, the staff said, 'It would appear that the request could have a negative impact on the area.'" I think that we need to hear from the public about that.
There is a property owner here in the, in the audience that's been involved from the beginning of this, that lives directly north, Mr. Westfall, if he, we want to hear from him, he can tell you his thoughts.
First off, is the applicant or someone representing the applicant in the room? Okay. No one? Okay. Well, we'll open it up for, for comments from the public, then, so if you have any comments regarding this issue, please come forward and give us your name and address, and state your case.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Rick Westfall, I live at twenty-two thirty-two Avon Avenue. I'm just to the north of the applicant. I'm here to oppose the application for a special permit. Their property are buts ours. During the course of living there, the property owner has had various different animals there. It started out, she had a horse in her care there, and the horse ended up in our yard eating things. Then it was goats, they were in there eating our bushes and our flowers and plants and such. Then, a couple years down the road, twenty fifteen, sixteen, somewhere in there, Planning and Zoning denied the initial request for a permit because there was no language, and during the course of the two years, probably from twenty fifteen to twenty seventeen, Eric Schrader from Planning and Zoning, along with Pat Morrissey and myself, worked to develop the guidelines for this hobby farm zoning. But in, I guess it was twenty sixteen or so, she had thirty-three sheep there, and based on what you're saying now, she could only have three, she far exceeded the numbers. And then the following year, she had thirteen to fourteen animals. Now she only has a couple there. But can you imagine the smell of the manure and the urine over the course of this time that we've had to deal with? In the summer months, it's really overwhelming. Our lot is probably three hundred foot across to the, to the farthest north part of the property, and you could smell it clear over there. She doesn't have a very good track record, if history would, has shown that she has no regard for the neighbors, being us, we are the closest neighbor, all the other neighbors are quite some distance from there. But we've been very patient. I'd like to thank Councilman Morrissey, and Eric Schrader, and Mr. Holdman, I'd like to thank you for coming out there. Commissioner Bunson was out there and looked over this issue, and we're fed up with it, but we've been patient, we'll play the game by the rules, and I would oppose this of having any animals there. Like it says, farm animals belong on a farm. Just, I think it's time to, to say no to this. The guidelines were put in place to allow an opportunity for people to have hobby farms, and also protect the property owners. Now, when my wife gets ready to retire in a year and a half, and we decide to sell a place, what kind of a ordeal are we going to have to go through to try and sell it with this type of a situation next door? The commissioners were up here in the initial stages of talking about the hobby farm zoning, and brought up the issue of selling property, you know, that was next to this kind of a situation, and stuff like that. So it's, it's been kicked around, you guys have kicked around a lot of ideas, a lot of good ideas, but like I said, this zoning ordinance is there also to protect other homeowners that are in this type of a situation. And like I said, her past history is indicative of the way she's going to continue, I think. So I would oppose it, but if you decide to approve the special permit for, I would like to have you as a condition of this permit, force them to move their confinement area to the far south of the property, along with the confinement buildings for the animals, so to somewhat abate some of the stink. And I'd like to thank you people for allowing me to voice my concerns. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
This is Flynn, and just a question, you said you were on a committee to work with Morrissey?
I wasn't on a committee, I was there to help put forth some ideas regarding that. We kicked around some ideas, and it, it wasn't all in my favor, but it was to help develop this for the, you know, the rest of the citizens of Waterloo, along with myself. I can't always have it my way either, and I understand that.
So for the development of that process that you were a part of, did it say you could have hobby farms, or not have hobby farms within city?
Well, it wasn't so much that, we were, we were trying to develop the language that would address all of the issues related to a hobby farm, and I think Eric would agree with me that, you know, somewhere down the road, this might need to be fine-tuned, because this doesn't address each and every issue that could possibly come up. It addresses ours in a, in a generality, but there may be some other specifics that will be, you know, have to be tweaked or something like that, but it's a, it's a good start.
Thank you.
And I have a question for Mr. Westfall as well. So how close are those confinement areas to your lot?
I would say, the last time I measured, they were probably within a hundred and ten feet of the bedroom window, and, you know, that doesn't allow us to open the windows during the spring and, and summer months, to enjoy the fresh air and stuff out there. And like I said, you, you know, the stink from the urine and the manure is overwhelming, you know, you just can't, your quality of life is greatly diminished.
Right. And I do remember being out there in the summer, so I can, even though I have allergies, can attest to that, where it is presently.
Well, there weren't that many animals out there that I saw anyway.
No, there, there's only a couple, three out there now, but if she, you know, if she, she's allowed to have four, and they breed, you know, I'm guessing a male and a female, she's only going to end up with two offspring, and stuff like that, you know. And there, there's no evidence, that I have seen over the course of the years, that she's properly disposed of the animal waste either. So, you know, I've seen them put a couple pieces of the manure around their smaller trees to fertilize them and stuff like that, but, you know, the, the guidelines, as far as the zoning, they have to properly dispose at a regular interval to get that, and I'm not sure, Eric, does, does it address the smell of the manure in there somewhere?
This is Schrader with staff. The ordinance does talk about removal, it lists a maximum, I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but it lists a maximum quantity in cubic feet, I believe, of how much material they can have, that has to be disposed of on a regular basis. The intent of the provision is to avoid it from becoming a nuisance, but there isn't any, you know, specific wording that says, you know, other than that amount of manure that they're allowed to, to stockpile before they have to get rid of it.
Any other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Well, this is Flynn, and this is actually for staff, not for you, but as far as what Mr. Westfall said, as far as if there would become more than three, what, what type of capabilities and staff, and do we have for enforcement of this? I mean, for the enforcement of, you're meeting the guidelines of the hobby farm rules.
In terms of, this is Anderson with staff, in terms of ongoing enforcement, obviously, you know, a lot of codes throughout the city are based on citizen complaints, someone calling in and saying, hey, they just had some young ones, and then we'll have to keep track of when we're, we're aware of them, and when they'd have to be gone to stay in compliance. So if they were not to stay in compliance after being notified of being out of compliance, it would go down as, it's a citation, is how it starts out, and the, the fines go up higher as the time goes by.
I know our code enforcement is so much strapped, I hear that anyway, so adding hobby farm checks, that there's three instead of four, or a baby goat is there, I mean, I'm just wondering if that just increases the stress on the code enforcement?
I'm sure it would, you know, and, you know, this, I think during the course of this development of the zoning and stuff, there, there were only maybe two or three issues dealing with hobby farms or farm animals and stuff like that. One was chickens or ducks or something like that, so there's not that many, but, you know, they are overwhelmed, you know, with all of the other stuff, and I can't, can't help but think that, you know, it'll just be an extra burden for them. But, you know, here again, zoning is, is a tool that the city can use and put out there at the, at the onset to prevent some of the abuses and things like that, that people are put on notice that you can't do this, and you can't do that.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak, either for or against?
Hello, my name is Pat Morrissey, and I'm the city council person for Ward Three, and that's primarily why I'm here today, because of concern of a resident or residents within Ward Three having to do with an urban animal hobby farm ordinance. having to do with an urban animal hobby farm ordinance and the application of that. And right here is what's happening. And first of all, I just want to say thank you for doing what you guys do and allowing me to talk today. Thank you for the staff. Thank you Chairman Holdman for allowing me to talk right now, too. But the urban animal hobby farm, as you guys all know, just the ordinance itself had been a problem, and there needed to be something done, okay? And I know that I've talked to Mr. Westfall and his wife on different occasions regarding this. And the concern that I have with this one right now is based on the past practice of the place that wants to get this special permit. And what the Westfalls and maybe other neighbors who aren't here, but may be concerned about, is there going to be compliance with an ordinance or with any special permit should you grant that? But the ordinance was written so that there were guidelines that you could make a decision on as opposed to not having those guidelines in the past. Well, now you have them. And the guideline does not allow for there to be four sheep here. And I know that other people on the city council, when this was even brought up, wanted these guidelines to be followed pretty stringently, without exception, quite frankly. Then the concern that I have with this one is not just the four, but the fact that, as Staff Chris Western had stated, is then you, when you subtract square footage from there, you're down to sixty-three thousand square feet. Well, the configuration that's up there doesn't account for, I don't know if it accounts for the minus factors from the setbacks. I heard that that probably doesn't. But it also has to disclude or not include the buildings that are on that lot that would be in that confined area as well. And I don't know if it does that for sure. The other issue that I have is I know that there, it's been stated here that there are there are maybe three, I don't know how many animals there right now. But are there going to be other animals there? I know that when I was out there a couple times, there were more than just one type of animal out there. And the ordinance itself speaks to the fact about if there's a combination of animals and is that going to seep in here? Are we gonna have seepage of other animals in here? So I, as a person who's been involved with this, would like to see the commission here come to a decision about whether this even qualifies for three sheep. We know it doesn't apply, or doesn't qualify for four sheep, but does it really apply to, for three sheep? So I speak in opposition to the four and would ask you to look more closely at whether it even applies to three. Definitely it applies to two. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And that's why I asked Chris earlier if, taking into consideration the setbacks, if we would still have sixty thousand square feet. He thought there probably would be, but I think he's doing some checking right now.
This is Schrader with staff. It would probably definitely be close because we've got the the area as calculated was based on measuring the actual current fenced area. And if you take out the front yard, we've got that number in the staff report. We don't have a number for if you have to adjust the other fencing. Adjusting the other fencing is not going to have a drastic impact on the square footage, but it will reduce it some. So we don't have those numbers in front of us. It's gonna be close to sixty thousand. And quite frankly, the numbers we have are based off of a measurement off of the aerial photo, which isn't necessarily one hundred percent accurate anyway. So ultimately, the applicant is requesting for a variance. She's asking for the special permit to have four sheep and is asking for a variance to the fact that it doesn't meet the area for four sheep, that there is a portion of it on the southwest corner of the property that extends into what's considered the required front yard and a variance to the setback of the fence on the northeast and south property line. Those variances to the provisions will be the purview of the Board of Adjustment, although it's obviously something that the Planning Commission can discuss as part of your decision in recommending approval of a special permit. But based on the information we had, we looked at, you know, not wanting to go with a variance to the density, which is why we recommended approval of three. Possibly if you get accurate measurements, it would dip slightly below sixty thousand square feet. But it's gonna be very close. I guess from a staff's perspective, we wouldn't be opposed if it's short a couple of hundred square feet, you know, to a variance to the density for three sheep. We didn't want to stretch the recommendation to go to four sheep based on the newly passed ordinance and the density requirements. The setback from the fence, you know, that's kind of ultimately gonna be up to the Board of Adjustment. But, you know, our initial thoughts was it's a new ordinance, and we never like granting variances to a brand-new ordinance. But at the same time, it's an existing fence that has had farm-type animals in the past. Some, you know, legally through the, you know, previous horse setup and some not legally through the goats and sheep that have not had the special permit approval for the hobby farm as required by the ordinance. But the setbacks are, you know, it's at least not a zero-foot setback. And there was a lot of discussion when we were going through the adoption process on that setback requirement. I think there was a general consensus for large-type animals that they should have a ten-foot setback. There were some that disagreed with that, though. There was, seemed to be consensus that the small-type animals did not need that greater setback. There wasn't really a lot of discussion with intermediate, but in the end ordinance, a large-type animals and intermediate-type animals are thrown together. So that's potential uniqueness there to look at, that although large and intermediate are thrown together and are required to have a ten-foot setback, that provision was probably a little more geared towards, you know, ensuring an adequate setback for large-type animals. The ordinance also, again, even though it's a relatively new ordinance and we don't wanna necessarily start granting variances to it right off the bat, the ordinance had wording written directly into it, allowing the Board of Adjustment to grant variances and not necessarily having to meet all of the criteria that a normal variance would have to meet. Under that understanding of, we knew we were passing an ordinance that was on the more restrictive side and that there would be situations that come up where a request might meet many of the requirements, but not all of the requirements and potentially, based on the uniquenesses of the site, might be deemed appropriate to grant a variance. So that could be the situation here. I'm not, you know, saying that one way or the other, but that'll primarily be the main discussion point, I think, of the Board of Adjustment in determining if they'll grant any variances.
Well, I was just, if my head calculator is working correctly, and it may or may not be, it looks like, based on the data that we have in the report here, that we could be like twenty-five hundred square foot over what the sixty thousand square foot requirement would be with the current fenced-in area. But then if you take out the setback, the required setback and not the actual setback, it's probably gonna be less than that because the, you know, it's a big lot. So you got five-foot setbacks more than what you already have.
Well, we had the confined area, current confined area, calculated as sixty-seven thousand five hundred and eighteen. So that's seven thousand five hundred and eighteen square feet over the sixty minimum for three. And then take out the, yeah, so take out the four thousand and fifty.
And the, or don't you subtract?
So that leaves about three thousand square feet, and then you're gonna have to subtract a little bit more than that. We don't know the exact number, but a little bit more than that if they would be required to move the fence on the northeast and south property line. So I don't know how many square feet. That might be a little over three thousand square feet, which would then put it a little under sixty thousand square feet. We don't have those numbers.
Craig, did you have something else? I have one question, then. I think one of us mentioned something about then the house and the buildings as far as square foot.
Yeah, that's not included in the sixty-seven thousand square feet.
So you take out the four thousand and then however big that house and garage are and the two buildings.
Sixty-seven thousand does not factor in. That's already properly excluded from the calculation.
It is. Okay, that's, that's, I didn't know that. Okay.
But this is Flynn, and I guess if this is a new ordinance, as staff is saying, and if we as commissioners are that concerned about the exact square footage, then we need to table this until we have exact square footage in front of us.
This is Castle. I just have a clarification on moving forward. So if, it says that the staff recommends having the three sheep and a special permit. I'm trying to remember how we wrote the ordinance. If they meet all the guidelines, do they have to have a special permit?
If they meet all the guidelines and if they get a certain percentage of adjacent property owners, then they do not need a special permit. I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but it talks about the, you know, actual abutting property owners and then a percentage of the property owners within, I believe we went with two hundred and fifty feet. So if they met all the requirements and they had a petition that had the number of necessary signatures, they would not need the special permit. The applicant opted to not attempt to get signatures of adjoining property owners and just submit the application for special permit.
Okay, and then this is.
I was just gonna say, so then that means we have kind of two options. We can table it and wait for that, or we can continue the discussion. And if we all know how we wanna vote on the variance, then they have to come back and do their due diligence to get approved for the three sheep. Is that correct? That we get that information later on the actual square footage if we deny this today and they have to come back with the other part?
Well, if you were to recommend approval of the special permit, the Board of Adjustment will have the final decision on approving the special permit, along with any variances necessary. If you recommend denial of the special permit, it will still go on before the Board of Adjustment where they'll have the final say on whether or not to deny the special permit. If they do approve the special permit, then they'll also have the authority of whether or not to grant any variances to those setback requirements. If you table the request, then we'll work with the applicant to try and come up with some better measurements to basically determine if the fence is required to be moved back the ten feet on both the northeast and south property line with, you know, the fence being moved so it's out of the front yard along the west property line, what that would leave for square footage.
And this would be a mute point if they choose not to do that.
They made some.
Correct. They do not want to do that, which is why they're asking for a variance to those provisions. So I would anticipate that they'll, even if the commission recommends approval of that way, it would still be their intent to go before the Board of Adjustment, asking for approval as submitted.
Okay, and then this is Butch, and then the fact that we have a resident abutting the property, she did not get any signatures from anyone, and he's, sounds like, pretty adamant about opposing it unless those buildings are moved. Wasn't that one of our prerequisites, is that they had to have abutting properties? Okay, this?
The prerequisite of having the abutting property owner's signature is just to avoid even having to come before the Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment, to avoid needing a special permit. If you're going to submit the application for special permit and go before the Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment, there's no require to have that petition. It obviously still can be a good idea. Any special permit request, we recommend that the applicants talk with adjoining property owners and if possible, get a petition. I can't speak for the applicant, but I suspect she knew she was not gonna be able to get those signatures, so didn't try.
Okay, I just must have misunderstood when we went in on what we voted on. I thought that was part of it.
Now, having the signatures is only a prerequisite if you're trying to avoid having to apply for the special permit.
Special permit. Okay.
Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak either for or against this item? Okay, seeing no one, commissioners, we need a motion or some more discussion?
This is Castle. Just, I guess, a little more discussion. If we were to move forward, I would rather not table it. I would be more apt to deny it because we did work so hard on the ordinance and none of this meets that. And I would like to see that this property meets those requirements rather than give a special permit right away.
Okay.
My position agrees with, my position agrees with Castle.
Would you like to put that in the form of a motion?
All right. I move that we deny the request for a special permit because they don't currently meet the ordinance, which we need to stick with.
Just flat out deny it?
Yep.
And that's for the four, correct?
Yes.
Well, for any.
For anything. We just deny the special permit for any of it.
I would second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I feel that I will abstain from voting because I don't have accurate information.
Okay.
I have a question. You know, if they have more information in three, is that, how does that affect a previous vote for three? Do they can still come back?
I believe they can.
Didn't, isn't it that she can still go forward and ask for a variance for three, even if we deny for three?
This is Schrader with staff. She can still go forward to the Board of Adjustment and ask for the variance for four. Okay.
The reason that I'm saying just deny it across the board is it's, the staff recommended saying that she could do three. She's not requesting three. She was requesting the four. So I'm just saying, keep it with that.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Well, and my problem is if staff is our experts on this and telling us what is accurate and not according to our hobby farm guidelines, and we have code enforcement hired by our city taxes that are supposed to enforce this, I guess part of my thought is, why do we even have this if we're going to deny it all the time? If this applicant has taken the proper procedures, we know the past history is there, but they followed all the proper procedures and staff is saying it's eligible for three. So I guess my point is if we're not gonna, if I'm not going to listen to people that supposedly know, then I won't vote on it. That's my point.
Well, I have a question. Is that, did she actually follow all the proper procedures since we're having this discussion about not meeting the setbacks and not meeting the requirements and neighbors complaining and everything?
I'm saying as far as the application process, she has followed, you know, filing for an application, filing what she was supposed to do properly. So as a citizen, if I'm following the rules that I'm told to follow, then I think that should be good for something.
Can we take into account past performance?
Well, I guess.
Factors in the ordinance.
Yeah, and I don't think it's fair because there were thirty-three sheep there. Well, obviously, that had to be out of some type of compliance to have thirty-three sheep there. And as a city, we didn't enforce that. That's not her fault.
Well, it kinda is.
But I break the speed limit until I get caught. I speed. I mean.
This is Wilbur. So I hear Commissioner Flynn, clarify if I'm wrong, saying that you would, you want to leave her the option to have the commission to approve having three sheep if there's the adequate square footage, but so leave that option on the table, but just deny it for the four.
Right, that's, that's what I would say, but I don't have the, yeah.
I would be in agreement with that because, as I agree with Commissioner Flynn, that if she is complying with the ordinance for, if she would be in compliance for three sheep, then I don't see that we have anything, I mean, I don't see that we have room at this point to deny that.
This is Butch. But one of the things that's in the ordinance also is the part about actively removing the manure. I know we hate to bring that part up, but if in the past she has not done that and she's not been complying for this long, who's to say she is so that? Plus, the fact that the neighbor is talking about the buildings and the quality of life that he has to endure.
And this is Wilbur. I'm not.
If we vote on that, and so we've gotta vote on what she said first, but we would have to include some extra things there before I would even consider saying yes.
And this is, this is Wilbur. I guess I don't, I don't know what the ordinance. And this is, this is Wilbur. I guess I don't, I don't know what the ordinance says exactly, but if we're going by the ordinance, I'm not saying that, I mean, if, if there, if the ordinance allows us to take into consideration, you know, the, the property owners this route with her going the special permit, then I think that's part of what we can consider for three, but I don't know that, is that part of the ordinance is, so, right now, if she's meeting the ordinance for, if she would meet the ordinance for three, then I don't see, I mean, if we need to have a, maybe we need to have a condition in there that she has to get the variance for the setbacks of the fencing if we approve three, but.
This is Schrader, you certainly could do such a condition. You don't really need to do such a condition because the Board of Adjustment would have to approve both the special permit and any necessary variances. The special permit without a variance would only let you operate the special permit if it complied with the ordinance.
And this is Westman with staff. Just to make it simpler, and, and you know, you know how you write a report, and it makes so much sense to you because you deal with it every day? There's some areas in here where I can see where it wasn't as clear as it could've been. So I just wanna reiterate. So, uh, she, uh, the applicant could have three goats as far as the density or sheep, I'm so stuck on goats. Sheep, based on the density requirements. But you would still be granting your first request of the year of this ordinance several variances to the, uh, fence setback. If you, if you were to grant her four, you'd be granting a variance to the, uh, density requirements, and you'd be granting a variance to having farm animals in the front yard. So, did I make that more clear? So.
This is Wilbur, I'm sorry. We would, our, our commission would be granting the variances?
I, I take that, Board of Adjustment would be tasked with that. But you'd be saying it's okay to have variance for the fence setback, variance for the density requirements for the four sheep, not the three, four, and a variance for having farm animals in the front yard. You'd be recommending approval to the Board of Adjustment to have that.
And this is Castle, and that, that's my problem with it is not saying you can't do it, but there's so many things that we need to go back, and if we were to deny this today for any of the special permit, she still has the opportunity to make those changes and come back or do the, asking the neighbors. It's not saying she can never have them again, it's just, I have a hard time with saying, yes, you can have three, yes, you don't have to meet the setbacks that we worked so hard to go through.
Correct.
And, uh, this is Do Not, and I thought in our discussion that we were having that, you know, we were talking about four, and then we were talking about three, and the recommendation from the staff was the three sheep. But there was question in our discussion whether she even met, um, the requirements for having the three sheep instead of the four sheep. And I, I don't know if that was completely clarified, because everything was.
It was just Schrader with staff. It was not definitively clarified because we do not have the exact numbers of what the square footage would be if the fence was moved to those distances.
So, yeah. So, the, the, I'm just trying to explain that that's why my position is where it is, where if we were voting on it today as an item, that I would be voting against it as presented by Castle.
So we have a motion on the floor?
We do.
And seconded.
Restate your motion in case people forgot.
Yep, um, I moved that we deny the special permit for either the four or the three sheep, um, as presented in the report.
Okay, has been moved, it has been seconded. Oh, yeah, probably should have a roll call if there's no further discussion. Okay.
Wilbur, so a yes vote is to deny. Wilbur?
Yes.
Flynn?
Abstain.
Mehe?
Yes.
Do Not?
A yes vote to deny?
Yep, a yes is to deny.
Um, yes, to deny.
Butch?
Yes.
Castle?
Yes.
Holdeman?
Yes.
Did I get everyone?
Thank you. Okay, that request is denied. We'll move on to our next item. The request by Drew Reg Investments for a special permit to allow a salvage yard located at one-twenty-three and one-thirty-nine Clark Street. We have a staff report.
Just starting off with staff, just to let you know that, a note that I did put a site plan in front of you guys, in front of you. You all should have one now, um, that, that was brought out before, we got that after, um, the packet went out, so. This is a request for a special permit for a recycling junk or salvage yard located at one-twenty-three and one-thirty-nine Clark Street. The applicant is requesting to operate a salvage yard, um, including land between Clark Street and the Canadian National Railroad, adjacent to Broadway Street. The request would not appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding area as the area is made up of multiple salvage yards and industrial uses. The proposed request would not appear to have a negative impact of vehicular pedestrian traffic in the area. The site is zoned M-one Industrial District and has been zoned as such since the adoption of the zoning ordinance in nineteen-sixty-nine. Uses in the vicinity, um, to the north is salvage yards, zone M-one Industrial District. To the south is the Canadian National Railroad and Broadway Street, zone M-one Industrial District. And to the south of that, of Broadway is residence, zone R-two, one and two family residence district. Um, to the east is industrial development, zone M-two Heavy Industrial District. And to the west is industrial development, salvage yard, and the Canadian National Railroad, zone M-one Industrial District. The area is principally industrial with structures built between nineteen-oh-three to present, with a majority built between nineteen-sixties and present. The recycling junk and salvage yard ordinance requires that yards be surrounded by an eight-foot fence that is uniform in height and color. A drainage panel will need to be approved by the engineering before a permit can be issued. The area is zoned, zone X, um, it, um, protected by levy. George Washington Carver Middle School is located approximately point-two-five miles to the northeast. Lincoln Elementary School is located point-seven-one miles to the west, and East High School is located one-point-five miles to the southeast. There is an eight-inch sanitary sewer line located in Clark Street that ends at approximately one-eighteen Clark, and a fifteen-inch sanitary sewer line in Grandview, and an eighteen-inch sanitary sewer line located in the right-of-way of the Canadian National Railroad. The future land use map designating this area as industrial, and this request would be in compliance with sus- designate, designation. The applicant is proposing to operate a salvage yard at one-twenty-three and one-thirty-nine Clark Street. On November twentieth, two thousand seventeen, the City Council approved the ordinance fifty-four-twenty-six, changing the city of Waterloo zoning ordinance as retains the recycling junk and salvage yards. The goals, the change of the change was to ensure that yards operate in a more sustainable way, and, um, to apply the concepts of the, um, Iowa Recyclers Association I-CARE program, and the applicant would be fi- required to follow the new ordinance. Under both the previous and the new ordinance, any new salvage yard is required to have five acres of land as currently constituted, including previously approved vacates. The salvage yard will have four-point-seven acres of land. Therefore, the applicant would be required to, um, attain a variance from the Board of Adjustments to allow for the smaller footprint. Under the new salvage yard ordinance, any new salvage yard must be at least six hundred feet from a protected use. A protected use includes any building in which a majority of the floor space is used for residential purposes. The proposed location of the salvage yards does have residences located less than six hundred feet to the west and south boundary of the pro- proposed salvage yard, so the request would require variance from the Board of Adjustments for having a protected use within six hundred feet. However, it should be noted that the Canadian National Railroad and Broadway Street are located between the proposed salvage yard and the protected uses. The proposed location of the salvage yard is in an area that's been zoned M-one and light industrial district since the adoption of the zoning ordinance in nineteen-sixty-nine. In addition, the comprehensive plan and the future land use map for the area designated this area as industrial. Further, the commu- the makeup of the area is primarily salvage, other salvage yards and manufacturing facilities, so fits into current makeup of the neighborhood. Therefore, staff would recommend that the approval of the request for a special permit to allow a recycling junk or salvage yard located one-twenty-three and one-thirty-nine Clark Street be approved for the following reasons. The request would, is in a area zoned M-one and light industrial district, and as confirms to the future land use map and comprehensive plan, the proposal would not appear to have a negative impact on neighborhood traffic conditions in the area, and the surrounding area is composed of compatible use businesses, including other salvage yards, with the following conditions: that salvage yard be properly fenced and buffered, that the salvage yard follows the new guidelines set forth by ordinance fifty-four-twenty-six, that all fencing around the salvage yard be of solid material with an earth tone color, brown or dark green, that the fence along the Canadian National Railroad be set back a minimum of eight feet, that area shall be planted with a minimum of ten two-inch caliber understorey trees spaced a maximum of fifty feet apart, that no crushing shall occur on the site, that no stacking of vehicles or materials shall be permitted above the height of the fence, that the operation be limited to automobile recycling salvage yard impound lot, and that no engines, parts, or other scrap material shall be stored outdoors, that no vehicles, temporary or permanent, shall be stored outside the fenced area at any time. All areas for vehicular use outside of the fence area shall be properly hard-surfaced. This shall include any currently legal non-conforming grandfather vehicular use areas currently existing, which shall be properly hard-surfaced within one year of the special permit approval.
Are there any questions for staff?
Yes. This is Butch, and I guess I like to drive, but I drove out there yesterday because pictures just don't do it for me. I have to see it visually. First of all, um, back in staff analysis, you talked about the five acres of land, and here again, we are going against the ordinance that is in place, that it be four-point-seven, so I just wanted to draw that to the commission's, um, view. Also, that it does have residences less than six hundred feet to the west and south. So it would be interesting to hear from, um, residents about that. So, saying that the proposal, proposal would not appear to have a negative impact on the neighborhood or traffic conditions, traffic, um, I understand that part, but impact on the neighborhood, I wa- I have a question about. This part really doesn't relate to it, but I'm just gonna bring this up. There's a south, there are other salvage yards out there, but as I was driving up on the left-hand side of that road, this other thing we're looking at is on the right, um, they have head car parts above their fence, so that needs to be addressed. There's a bunch of racks or something, and then you can see car parts, looks like a bunch of bakery shelving or whatever, but then there's car parts up there, so just wanted to bring that to staffs.
Well, the applicant is here, so he can address any of the issues, so.
Okay, that would be great.
This is Wilbur, can I ask a, a question as well? Do the, do the residences within the six hundred feet get some ki- type of notice, or is that not part of the permit application?
Did just the general two-hundred-and-fifty feet from the actual, yeah.
And can you talk about, um, you mentioned that, um, you note that the railroad and Broadway Street are between where the proposed salvage yard and the protected uses are. Can you talk about that a little bit more?
It's just that, um, you know, that, the railroad and Broadway kind of create a barrier between the two, so, you know, while they're within six hundred feet is still quite a barrier there because of that highway and the railroad.
Any other questions for staff?
Go ahead.
Well, I just wondered that, um, it said that they would have to have it, um, hard-surfaced within a year. Who follows up on that?
This is Schrader with staff, that would be the responsibility of planning staff.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
This is Butch, um, I appreciate this extra picture because the picture we were given showed about a row of ten cars, and to my knowledge, there was just eyeballing it, there were at least a hundred cars there with, with, what do you call, the front of the car up, I saw engines, just saying.
So, and the, the current fence that's around there is a chain link, like, that's not gonna pass?
Right, it has to be a solid fence.
This is Schrader with staff, there's no fencing or, to my knowledge, around the south portion of the property. I think there's some chain link.
There's chain link up here, yeah.
Yeah, on the north side, on the north part of, north of Clark Street, there's fencing.
The applicant can probably address this better, but just giving a, a little bit of background, the, as the staff report mentioned, the city of Waterloo has recently passed, uh, an amendment to uh, the zoning ordinance for the regulations that, uh, cover recycling junk and salvage yards. What was not mentioned as part of that is, uh, leading up to that passage, there was a moratorium on the approval or application of any new requests for a recycling junk or salvage yard. And I don't have the exact dates on that, but I think that total time period that that moratorium was in place was a little over two years, while, uh, the city of Waterloo, uh, Planning Department primarily was working on writing the ordinance that would be adopted. So, the applicant can speak on this, but he essentially got kind of in a little bit of a limbo area where he had purchased the property with this intended use, but could not submit the application for special permit. He has been in contact with staff with the intent of filing this application, but has been barred from filing the application because of the moratorium that was passed.
Okay, this is Butch, and then, so how long has that, and the applicant probably answered that question, but do you know how long that part of the lot has been used as a place to dump cars?
Yeah, the, uh, the applicant could definitely address that, but I think it's somewhere in that two to two-and-a-half year time range.
Okay, have they been fighting anybody else about this?
Because they do not have a special permit on file, they are in violation of the ordinance, and code enforcement has been addressing that with them, but they're now submitting their application for special permit.
Okay. This might be just hearsay, so, I'm just gonna say this, and I don't know whether it's true or not, I need you to answer this for me, but I heard they were in court about this.
Yes, they were issued a citation by code enforcement.
Twice.
Could be, I don't know the number, but they, they have not had a hearing, yeah, the applicant can address that, but I don't think there's been a hearing yet.
Thanks.
So, is there any other request, or anybody else want to question staff?
I just, I wanted to point out that my questions were similar to, um, Commissioner Butch's about the four-point-seven acres instead of the five acres, and also the, within six hundred feet of protected, um, protected uses. And so that was a concern for me as well.
They'll need a variance to those provisions.
This is Wilbur, what was the, um, required, um, acres of land?
Five, five acres, yeah.
Okay.
There's a note for the vacation of that dead-end road. Does anybody have an idea of, staff know the amount of ground?
Which one?
Clark Street?
Clark. The, the applicant would like to vacate Clark Street as well, uh, of which would give him over five acres. The city has expressed concern regarding the vacate of Clark Street, so it, the vacate of the other uh, public right-aways, there's two alleys, and then a north-south street called Fairview that it's labeled as a street, but it was never actually built as a street, the right-of-way is still there. The Planning Commission previously recommended approval of those vacates, and they have not gone on to City Council yet because he was waiting for this special permit issue, waiting for when he could actually submit the special permit.
So does the four-point-seven acres include those vacated areas, proposed, proposed vacated alleys and street Fairview?
Yes.
Okay.
It does not include Clark Street though.
Okay. Okay. Any other? Okay, I assume you're the applicant and would like to make a statement. Please come to the mic and give us your, your name and address, and, uh, hopefully you can address any questions we have.
Sure, we'll be happy to. My name is Craig Lindsay, my address is nineteen thirteen Upton Avenue. I'm the owner of Drew Reg Investments, which owns those properties at one-twenty-three Clark and one-thirty-nine Clark. Uh, I run a towing business, Can-Am Automotive and Towing. I have a part of the city wheel for also Blackhawk County and for Waterloo. So a lot of those cars that you see sitting there, I've gained through, uh, tow-offs from the city streets, abandoned cars. They've been placed there. Like Eric said, I've been trying to apply for a salvage permit since I bought the property back four years ago. Within the last two-and-a-half years, I've worked towards that, and there's been a moratorium. Within the last two and a half years, I've worked towards that. There's been a moratorium. I've been working with Eric and the planners to try to get an ordinance written so I can apply. I've now applied. I'm four point seven acres. If the city at some point would be interested in vacating Clark, I'd be over that five acre limit. I want to get it so that it would be fenced, so that people can't go through there, can't see what's there. Just like the rest of the salvage yards that are around me, there's three or four of them. I'm not sure where you looked. I know that there's cars that are there. There's no parts that are laying strewn there. I was there through there today. There's abandoned cars that are missing wheels and batteries and converters, which I strip off so that people do not steal them. But other than that, there should be most all ninety-nine point nine percent of them are cars and there should be no parts laying around. I do not sell parts. I do not take parts off those cars.
My, this is Butch and I'll just, is that okay if I just answer? Cause I know I made that comment. The reason I made it is because there were hoods up on cars and you could see engines. I didn't, at the time, I didn't have this sitting in front of me, so whether they were laying there or not, I did not see that.
Okay, and that's fine. Like I said, it, it, the pictures that you see, there's probably approximately three to three hundred and fifty cars there. I fully admit that.
Yeah, I was eyeballing.
I was issued a ticket by code enforcement. I've been in contact with Dave Zellhoffer. We've continued that ticket to this point so that I can try to apply for a permit. So I don't, either I'll have to pay the ticket at some point or maybe the ticket will go away if I'm granted a permit. I haven't contested that ticket. I won't contest that ticket because the cars are there. I'm here to, in hopes of getting a permit so I can fence it off correctly, make it look good for the neighborhood. It's pretty much the same use that everything else around there. There's Waterloo Auto Parts, A-Line EDS is there. I don't see a huge difference in me putting a fence around four point seven acres and making any, it's not going to make any more noise or any more dirt or anything different than that's already happening there. The property I bought was dilapidated when I bought it five years ago from Mr. Stokes. I've spent over a hundred thousand dollars fixing up the buildings inside and out. There's also a possibility of another building being built inside the salvage yard if I was to retain a permit for that. So I just want to let you guys know. I, I want to work towards staying there and having a viable business there. I own a couple of businesses in town. I try to, you know, I pay taxes in that area. My tax bill's over ten thousand dollars just on those three buildings that stand there now. Adding probably forty thousand dollars worth of correct fence, the way you guys would like it, will add to that bill. So I, you know, I'm not asking for anything. I don't think that's unreasonable. That's not in that area. Nobody's come to me personally opposing it. My neighbor to the north, if you call it the north, is Huff Construction. Those guys are more than willing for me to do that because it'll clean up behind them and add fence. My neighbor to the south, I would call Chris Fishels and his brother Tony. I've talked to them. They're more than happy to write me a letter of recommendation. They're fine with it because it'll clean up their yard. It'll add new fence to them. It'll just make it a cleaner space for everybody. And I'm open to all questions.
This is Castle and I just have a question about the plan that we were given. So I'm assuming this is the proposed fence. Are you going to have, are you intending on doing the fencing as stated here with the, the solid material and the earth tone color?
Yeah, I, I, the solid fence is not a problem. Brown or green is not the, you know, my favorite of colors. I would prefer to use something more. I mean, in my opinion, white or beige or blue or something would be better, but I'm, whatever rules you guys prefer to set, I'll be happy, more than happy to follow.
This is Schrader with staff. I'll comment on that because I'm the one that adjusted the, how the staff report read regarding conditions, including that one. So that is from a request several years ago, we kind of went with that general layout of conditions. A request on Airline Highway that was denied. I don't know. It's probably about two years ago now. I had several similar recommended conditions and I kind of was keeping it consistent. But I'm not overly concerned with the exact color. Kind of the, the thought process behind earth tones is to maybe blend in a little bit better with the environment and not be as noticeable, but I think, you know, a blue or a beige is probably fine too. Maybe white's fine too. You know, probably tends to stand out a little bit more, but I don't necessarily think it's a real big issue on the color of the fencing.
And then you also mentioned something about some trees and did you, did you notice that part?
Yeah, there will be trees across the front of it on the plan. There's, there's at least ten.
I didn't.
That's okay. There's at least ten there. If you prefer more, I'm open to putting more. I know it says every, there has to be one every fifty feet.
I think there should be eleven. No, I'm just kidding.
That's fine. That's fine. Like I said, you know, as, as far as ordinance and stuff, I'll follow the ordinance to the T. It's not a huge issue for me. I would just like to get it fenced in and closed off so that people can't go through there. Part of the problem is people go running in and around out of there when something's left open like that. So I just prefer to be able to fence it off. That way nobody sees it. Nobody knows what's in there. It just keeps a lot of people out of there.
From what I'm hearing you say, you have no problem following any of this. You just want to be able to do it on four point seven acres instead of five. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
If I could, if I could talk the city into giving me Clark Street, we wouldn't be here. And I, and I, and just to my point of four point seven, Clark Street has been there for forty years. It's not ever been used. It has no sewer in it. It has no water in it, in the land that I own. Going through my, if you look on the planet, if you go through there to the property to the, I would call it the east, which is owned by the Fishel brothers, they have no interest in putting a road through there. They've developed that land. So I don't think there's ever going to be a road through there. So I'm not sure exactly kind of why the city has hung on. They've, they've hung on and hung on, so if at some point they would give me the five acres, we wouldn't be here, but I guess for now I'm, I'm trying to apply with four point seven acres.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else here to speak either for or against this issue?
Hello, Pat Morrissey again, and I'm Ward Three City Councilperson. And I'm here opposed to the approval of this special permit for various reasons. First of all, we have an ordinance that says you have to have five acres. And I've just heard a summation that included that they're hoping that the city council is going to grant vacating Clark Street. Well, that hasn't happened yet and there's no guarantee that that will happen, which will keep this under five acres. Also, I, I've heard that the, the main point was the five acres. No. I represent citizens. I represent residents of Ward Three. That's the main point here. And one of the things I got clarified was one of the city planning people yesterday was when it comes down to variances, there's four things that have to be met. All four of them have to be met. And one that's not being met is, is this in the public interest? And do the people that are directly affected by it, are they okay with it? Well, I'm here to tell you, having walked around that neighborhood, and I wish that the proprietor here would have walked around the neighborhood rather than just the businesses and talked to the people that are within this six hundred foot setback. I have walked, there's, if my memory serves right, there's thirty-six properties that are residences within that six hundred foot setback. And that, we're not even talking about the properties that are on the other side of Broadway or the east-north part of Broadway. But I did get signatures. And of those thirty-five properties, because one of them that was on the map has been torn down. But of those thirty-five properties, I was able to have contact with nineteen of them. Okay, two of those people, although opposed to it, would not sign the petition. But everybody that I had contact with, because the rest of them either were not home or they didn't answer their door. There was not one person that was in favor of another salvage yard in their neighborhood. And I'd be more than happy to give you a copy of those signatures. So if you give one to Craig and Eric and maybe the, maybe the rest of the commission could pass that around. Those are property owners, those are signatures from property owners that are opposed to another salvage yard going in Ward Three, going in their neighborhood. I knocked on those and personally talked to those people about what was happening today at four o'clock regarding their neighborhood. They do not want to see another salvage yard in their neighborhood. They don't want to see one started. And one of the main questions that was asked was, why is Waterloo Auto Salvage there? We thought that was Waterloo Auto Salvage. Well, it's not Waterloo Auto Salvage. It's a new salvage yards that's going in. They don't want another salvage yard. I, as the councilperson for Ward Three, do not want another salvage yard in Ward Three. We've got eighteen or nineteen salvage yards already in the city of Waterloo. When is enough enough, dear commission members? You know, and I, I'm asking you, deny this special permit. You know, if you, it, it, there's already been an acknowledgement there have, that there has been citations issued. And there's court proceedings taking place or continued. So what appears to me to be happening is that somebody bought some property over here, decided that they were going, or before that, thought that they were going to put in a salvage yard, but it does not, not meet the requirements. So what do you do? You go ahead and try to create a, a ordinance or language that allows it to become legal. It wasn't illegal when, it wasn't legal when it was bought. It's not legal now and it's not in the public interest. Please deny this special request. Thank you. I also just want to bring to you signatures from people that are on the other side of Broadway over on Reed Street and Lincoln Street in that area too. Just so you know that this is not just one side of Broadway, but it's also the other side of Broadway. So thank you.
Can I ask just a quick question? With the signatures that you have, it just talked about another salvage yard. When you talked with them, did they know exactly the property in which you were talking about?
Yes, I pointed it out to them. They could see, many of them could see it from their property.
Okay. Then this is, this is Wilbur. Can you elaborate on some of the specific concerns that the neighbors had other than just being against another salvage yard?
Well, I mean, that's the primary one. We have another salvage yard going into our neighborhood. But beyond that, there was the issue about traffic going through there, heavy trucks, noise. Those are other concerns. And, and quite frankly, if this doesn't meet ordinance right now, why are we even talking about them being there?
I, I have a quick question for you, Pat, if you would. And I'm, I apologize if you've already answered this because I was kind of looking over the petition here while you were talking with Ms. Castle, but people, were people aware that it's all, that this salvage yard is already there? And it wasn't an additional salvage yard? When you, when you went around and knocked on doors?
They thought that it was part of Waterloo Auto Salvage.
Okay.
They thought, and they couldn't understand why there wasn't a fence around it, covering up that ice.
Okay. Well, yeah, that I understand, but what I'm saying is when they signed the petition, they were totally aware that it was already there.
They thought it was already legitimized. They thought that it was okay for it to be there. When they found out that this is something that requires a special permit because it's a new salvage yard, they said absolutely not.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
This is Flynn. So you're a city councilman?
Yes.
And you initiated these petitions?
Yes. I'm also a resident of Ward Three. I represent the citizens and I get involved. I'm an activist and that's what I do. And that's what I think is part of my job to Commissioner Flynn.
Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to speak for or against? Would you like to address? Yeah.
My business is in Ward Three, correct? According to you?
Yes.
Okay, and you're the city council for Ward Three, correct?
Yeah, probably you should.
Sorry, he is the councilman for Ward Three, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so now I've never met Mr. Morrissey. I've never heard from him. I've never seen him near my property. I've heard through other people that work for the city that he's been against my salvage yard, but he's never come to me and asked me, Mr. Lindsay, what's your plan? What are you doing? What are these cars doing here? I've never seen or heard from him. But I pay taxes in Ward Three. And he's supposed to be my counselor for Ward Three, correct? So to me, like I said, I'm, I'm not trying to hide from anything. I've come to the board to ask for this special permit because I'm point three acres short. I'll do what they say. But for somebody to come up here and say that they've, they've, don't want it just because they've never come to me, he's never showed up at my business or anywhere to ask me what my plan was or what it is. I just think it's funny that a city counselor who's supposed to be paid to do his job, but I pay taxes of over ten thousand dollars a year in that ward, hasn't come to see me about what's going on there. And that's my only comment.
Um, wait, wait, wait. This is, this is Wilbur and did you mention that, do you have a contract with the city for towing?
We, we don't, it's not really a contract. What it is, it's a rotation. So for every police call, there's three of us, Sheets Towing, Ray Mount, and myself. So every third call you get called for that.
Okay.
So we take in abandoned vehicles and dispose of them for the city.
And would you have anywhere else that you would be disposing of or placing those vehicles?
No, this is the only place.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for the applicant. Uh, this is Eric Dunlop.
Sure.
My question is, what's our answer to forty-one citizens who signed petitions?
I guess here's, here's my question is, I don't know, I wasn't there when the position, position, petitions was signed. I don't know what he told them, so I, I guess for me, if forty-one people showed up here to oppose it, I guess it would be a lot different. There's not one person or there might be one or two people here to oppose it. But like I said, I've been right out in front. I've never seen him or heard from him and he's supposed to be the counselor for Ward. If there is somebody that has a concern, they can come up, tell you guys a concern, but like I said, alls I want is a permit so I can fence it in, clean it up, make it look a lot better and go on from there.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak either for or against this item?
I was just wondering if I could respond, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
To the stuff that's been said. First of all, Ms., is, is it Mr. Lindsay or Mr. Lindsay? I'm the councilperson for Ward Three. Do you reside in Ward Three? Okay. So if you're requesting something like this that has this kind of impact on the neighborhood, the citizens in the neighborhood are the ones that I am responsible for. They are the residents within Ward Three who are affected by anything that happens within that ward. Now, if you are doing something to affect people in the ward, I would expect you to come to me and to talk to me rather than the reverse. And that's what I did with the citizens there. They were, I thought, to be made aware through city staff that they were within that six hundred foot setback, but now I hear that they weren't notified and therefore I'm very glad that I made contact with these thirty-five different properties and talked to the people. And to question my honesty and veracity when it came down to informing the public, the citizens in that neighborhood, to me is an insult, Mr. Lindsay. I told them exactly what was on the agenda for the commission. And that was that something was being requested which had to do, that was impacting their neighborhood. And that they should have a voice if they didn't want to appear, which they could appear. Otherwise, they could sign this petition. And it had to do with two things. Number one, that you did not meet the acreage allotment and number two, you are asking for something that requires you to have a six hundred foot setback and you are asking that that be basically abrogated. And so those were the two things that I said to the people. And as you see from the petitions there, the signatures there, that's what they signed on to, Mr. Lindsay. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I think there's someone else who would like to speak here, so please.
Councilor Morrissey, that's great, but my business resides in Ward Three. It pays taxes there. So you should also be concerned for my business, not only for the people. That's part of being a city councilor, if I'm correct. That's all I have to say. I'm done. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a clarification? So the new ordinance was approved on November twentieth, two thousand and seventeen.
By the city council.
And that was, that required the five acres. But before that ordinance, was it still five acres were required?
It was five acres. The, there was a lot of discussion while we were amending the ordinance as to the five acre requirement and there was some consideration to. And there was some consideration to lowering the requirement. It was, you know, staff was aware of this pending request and its issue of meeting the five acres. But the final determination was that we should leave the five-acre provision in there and require that this request and any other future requests that wouldn't meet the five-acre requirement to request a variance.
And the five-acre requirement came from the city council?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, this is Wilbur again. At least the petition that I have in front of me, most of the signatures are from August of two thousand seventeen.
Prior to that.
So were the residents aware of some of the, the new parts of the ordinance that would be going into effect, that would require some more environmental, um, e- environmental regulations and such? The purpose for that new ordinance? I don't know if the other-
The other, the, the Schrader was staff. The other, the other petition, we're all pretty much, yeah, within the last couple of days.
Okay.
But, there's two different petitions.
Okay.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for? Please give us your name and address.
Larry Westendorf, five twelve Reed Street, Waterloo. Uh, I live on the other side of Broadway. And I'm opposed to the junkyard. We've already got two of them there. Uh, at first, I had heard that K and M was using it as an impound lot. Impound lot is different than a salvage yard. And now, I'm understanding that it's going to be a salvage yard. We've already got two salvage yards in that neighborhood. I don't wanna see another one there. And a lot of the petitions that you see from back in August was, we were talking about a impound lot at that time. We don't even wanna see that.
So these were two separate petitions for different topics, impound lot and salvage yard?
Both, the one that I had, uh, from August, yeah, is for the impound. And, but it turned into a salvage yard. And what I can't understand is that the city has allowed this gentleman to use that lot and put those cars in there way before, uh, this even come up. And he's been in violation of the ordinance the whole time, but nobody seems to do anything about it. What's city code for? I guess nothing, the way it sounds.
I would agree.
Mm-hmm. Because, I mean, he's already been cited, what, once or twice now? And he still hasn't had to pay the fine. He doesn't have to go by the regulations. He doesn't have, what have we got code enforcement for? Just to pat somebody's hand and say, "Hey, you're in violation." And then they sit back and laugh at it, and still continue on doing what they're doing. So, that's my opinion, and thank you.
I have a question for you, sir. You know, the, there is some improvements, new fencing, uh, solid fencing, you know, some trees, landscaping. Would that be an improvement to you, or do you see that still as being?
I still see that as, as being an eyesore. When you're coming down the Broadway corridor from, like, the airport, where, there's already a salvage yard there. And, you know, why show people that we've got another salvage yard? I mean, I, I can't see it. We're supposed to be beautifying Waterloo, not adding junk. And the, the fence, okay, Waterloo Auto Parts has got a fence. You can still see over it from when you're driving down the highway. So what do you see? You see junk cars. What's people from out of state gonna see? Junk cars. No, we're just opposed of it. Any other questions?
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak either for or against this item? Okay, seeing no one. Commissioners, discussion? Motion?
I guess, this is Butch. I guess disregarding what the staff has recommended, um, the fact that we've seen and heard from quite a few residents, um, to me, it appears that there would be a negative impact on the neighborhood or traffic conditions in the area. So I would move to deny this variant, or not, special permit that's been asked for.
Um, I second the motion to deny.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to, to deny the request. If there's no further discussion? All in favor of denying the request? I don't know, should we have a roll call? Okay, we'll have a roll call.
And I wanna just add one more thing.
Sure.
Because of the size, because of the size as well.
Okay, so, the motion is that the request be denied. We'll have a roll call vote. A yes vote means you're denying the request.
Flynn?
No.
Mehe?
No.
Do Not?
Yes.
Butch?
Yes.
Castle? Wilbur?
So no is, yes is deny?
Deny.
Okay, no.
Holdeman?
No.
Motion fails. Five to two.
Okay, we have another motion.
This is Schrader with staff. It would be best if another motion is made, just to put it in the affirmative. Um, we kind of addressed that in the Roberts Rules of Order. Um, if there's not, it'll move on to the Board of Adjustment as such. But it's, it's just cleaner to, has it passed when a, a motion to deny failed? It'd be cleaner to have another motion.
This is Mehe. I'll make the motion to approve the request. With the conditions noted by staff, there's, uh, eight conditions noted by staff.
On pages twenty-one and twenty-two?
Correct.
Those are the ones? Okay.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the request, subject to the conditions that are stated on pages twenty-one and twenty-two of your packet. There's no further discussion? Okay, we'll have a roll call vote on that. Soon as Eric gets ready here.
So, so, explain, yeah.
Is to approve.
Thank you.
Mehe?
Yes.
Do Not? Butch?
No.
Castle?
Yes.
Wilbur? Flynn?
Yes.
Holdeman?
Yes.
Motion carries, five to two.
So that motion carries. Thank you all.
This is just a recommendation, will go on to the Board of Adjustment. I believe that is the twenty-third.
Okay, now we come down to the request by Drew Reg Investments for a special permit to allow a salvage yard located- I'm, ooh, I'm sorry. We've come down without, holy cow, I don't wanna do that over. We're, we're coming to the request by North Crossing LLC, this is plat, for preliminary plat of North Crossing Phase One, a two-lot subdivision located at the northeast corner of Logan Avenue and East Donald Street. And the request by North Crossing LLC for a final plat of North Crossing Phase One, a two-lot subdivision located at the northeast corner of Logan Avenue and East Donald Street. We have a staff report.
This is Schrader with staff. Uh, Mr. Andera is passing out a revised, um, plat document. We just got that right before the meeting, so we have not, uh, had a chance to take a real close look at it. But I think it'll address, uh, a lot of the, uh, comments that came up in the staff report and Technical Review Committee. So I'm gonna go through the staff report, but note that a, a lot of the issues that the staff report might note may very well be, uh, accounted for in the staff report. And the applicant and applicant's representative are here, and they can kind of, uh, address that as well. But it is a request for the preliminary and final plat of North Crossing Phase One, a two-lot subdivision at the northeast corner of Logan Avenue and East Donald Street. Uh, request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding neighborhood or land use. Uh, we've seen an increase in new commercial development within the recent, um, uh, years within this area. Um, would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular pedestrian traffic movement. Uh, the area is served by Logan Avenue, um, which is Highway sixty-three, and East Donald Streets. Logan is classified as a principal arterial, and East Donald is classified as a minor arterial. Um, the West Donald Street Trail joins the site on the south end. Uh, and a future trail is planned along Heath Street, which would, uh, end at Highway sixty-three, um, which is essentially directly adjacent to the property in question. Um, the area is zoned C-two commercial and CP planned commercial district. Uh, most of it's been zoned as such since nineteen sixty-nine. The area, um, zoned CP was rezoned, um, several years back for the proposed Menards project that did not develop. Um, in the past few years, a new Hy-Vee grocery store has been constructed. Uh, Walgreens completed their store. Um, Allen Hospital has completed a forty-seven million dollar expansion. The city of Waterloo has completed two, two stages of reconstruction of Highway sixty-three from Donald Street to Wes Parker, and is in the final stages, uh, for the last phase of that from Franklin Street to Jefferson Street. Um, site is not located within a special flood hazard area. Um, future land use map designates the area as commercial, so it is in conformance with the future land use map and is in a primary growth area. Um, as noted, it has areas zoned both C-two and CP, and the proposed development of the site does comply with the zoning requirements. Uh, submitted plat shows two new lots being platted. Uh, the one lot is seventeen point eight acres, and the other is two point seven four acres. Appears all setback lines are denoted. Uh, access to Lot One would be from an existing access along East Donald Street and a proposed new access from Logan Avenue. And Lot Two will have access from three, uh, different access points. Uh, two along East Donald, and one is the main entrance from Logan Avenue. There is also a tract A to the east that'll serve as a water detention basin. Um, the preliminary and final plat, as was, you know, previously submitted, uh, had some, uh, issues that didn't, uh, that still needed to be addressed, some mistakes and some missing information. And like I said, uh, the, there has been the new one submitted, and hopefully, that addresses, uh, all, i- if, you know, or at least most of those provisions. Um, so I don't necessarily need to go through all of, uh, the provisions on the last page of the staff report that denote those.
So you're talking about the, sorry for interrupting, but you're talking about the part that starts with the staff? Has several questions, and then it goes on to the next one?
Going on all the way through the end of page thirty-one, essentially, yes.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yep. Therefore, staff recommends that the request for the preliminary and final plat of North Crossing be approved as the request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. The request would not, um, appear to have a negative impact on pedestrian or traffic conditions within the area. Uh, the request is in conformance with the future land use map and comprehensive plan. And the request appears to meet the intent of the subdivision ordinance, subject to that, um, all questions and comments be addressed and, um, added to the preliminary and final plat prior to the request being submitted to the city council for final vote. As I noted, hopefully, most of those are already addressed, but, you know, we'll still leave that recommendation in there just so we can complete the final review and ensure, before we would submit it on to city council, that we've got all of the requirements that are needed.
I have a question for you, Eric, if you're done. Um, this that we just got doesn't show the detention basin. Is that still included in this, or not?
I would say we'll have, yeah, the applicant's representative come up.
Yes, that display was more of a reference for us, and I think Chris took it and made copies for you.
Oh, okay.
But it was an older draft version. The tract A does still have, or is still included for the detention. Yes.
Thank you, thank you. Are there any other questions for staff? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Johnson, I assume you're here representing the-
The developer.
The, uh, developer, so.
Yeah. Uh, thank you, uh, commission members. Uh, my name is Eric Johnson. I'm an attorney representing the developer, North Crossing LLC. Um, and, uh, this, um, proposed plat, I just wanna explain a couple of things. Um, first, um, the proposed changes or concerns, um, those were put in the staff report. We didn't receive the staff report, must've been, um, uh, an omission. Um, when I was looking at my calendar on Friday for the coming week, uh, I got on the city's website, pulled up the staff report, and I think it had been, uh, uh, done for a day or so, maybe. Um, saw those concerns, got them to AECOM, who is doing the engineering for us on that site. And that, that's Ms. Sweeney, and, uh, Mr. Fagel are here. Um, actually, Mr. Wheelie had been working on it ill. So these guys are stepping in and cleaning that up. Um, and they did a, so, they did a pretty great job for getting all those changes addressed here in the last two days. Um, while you were talking about, um, sheep, um, we were out with, uh, Mr. Gents from Engineering going through those. He sounded like, he said he thought we had addressed all his concerns. Now, obviously, we're, we would recommend you approve it, subject to verification that we have addressed all those concerns. Um, there were two attorney concerns on the deed of dedication. Um, both of those have been addressed. And so, um, I just wanted to tell you that because nobody likes to get anything last minute. We don't like to get anything last minute. But we tried to be responsive to that because, um, we wanna keep this moving forward. We do have, um, some development ready to happen on Lot Two. And we need to finalize this to make that, uh, development happen on Lot Two. So, um, that's my story, and I'm glad to answer any questions that you may have. But I just wanted to explain the timing and why you're getting it right now. Uh, um, and I'm not blaming staff or anything. I'm just simply saying, we've tried to be as responsive as we can, and I think we've been pretty responsive, actually. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, I do have one question of him, if that's okay? So, in this picture, and I'm glad they gave me a color copy, cause I'm getting more middle-aged. Um, over on the right-hand side, the Heath Street says "future." Is that a street right now, or is that? I'm not understanding what "future" means for the Heath Street part.
Can you put that picture up? Is that picture up on?
I don't, I don't think it's there now.
I don't think we have this digitally.
They might not have it here. Come on.
Cause Heath the other way goes up to the Allen.
Yeah.
I think this is a-
In North Crest.
It's not there, no.
It's, it is, yes. This is Schrader with staff. Heath Street, east of sixty-three, does not exist. This is a conceptual plan that shows the potential extension of Heath Street to the east, but it's, yeah.
So it would go clear down to a dead end by a bunch of trees? Is that right?
But it would give you access to those medical areas.
Access to these other areas.
It would split off to the areas to the north, too.
So just to let you know, that's not even part of this plat. That is to the north of this plat. And so, my client owns additional land to the north, and sort of, it sort of wraps around all of this. Um, this is the land that we were, as a city, hopeful that Menards was gonna develop at one time. Um, my client ended up buying that land from Menards. Um, and there's a master development agreement with the city as how this is all to happen. And my client is plating this land, and all the other land will be deeded back to the city. Um, my client will have a right of first refusal, um, to develop it, hoping, hoping his development goes. But that, that was part of a master plan and agreement, um, that, uh, came together over a couple of years, so. But the, I, I understand what you're saying. Um, that may develop at some point in time. Uh, you know, we, um, as developers, they, they come with their ideas, how they'd like to see it, and then, and then the businesses tell you how they'd like it to be. And so you try not to, um, put too much, um, concrete in until you know exactly what's going to go in and use it.
Right.
Yeah, visionaryists and you have realists.
That's not a part of this plat, so we don't need to worry about it.
It is not a part of this plat. It may be a part of some future plat that would come back to you at that point in time.
All right, thank you.
This is Schrader with staff, and, um, Mr. Johnson, and AECOM, and probably Bear- This is Schrader with staff, and, um, Mr. Johnson or, um, AECOM can probably verify this, but I'm pretty sure the answer is yes. I just wanted to get verified. One of the concerns from what was previously being shown was a, uh, permanent, um, sanitary sewer easement that ran through where a building was currently under construction. And I believe this shows now the easement being shifted, so it's not underneath the building, under construction.
Yep. This is Michelle Sweeney with AECOM, and that has been revised.
This is Castle, and I just have a question. I know that we weren't necessarily supposed to get this older drawing, but I just want to clarify what parts we are looking at, since there's a lot on here. So, the area that's labeled convenience store, the hotel, medical office, urgent care, and then the priority clinics, are those the general areas?
We're looking at this area right around here.
Yes.
No.
The medical office coming around.
No, I think it doesn't. I think it, I think it comes out around there.
So there's that little detention's right in here.
Yeah, I think the detention's down there.
Correct.
So I think it goes almost to Heath, where, where it shows Heath Street to the north, but then comes down.
Where McDonald's is out there.
Right.
It doesn't.
It's just, it goes up the, the north side of McDonald's.
Okay, yeah.
So it wraps around McDonald's?
A little bit.
Yeah, McDonald's sits on their own lot.
It's Lot Three, yeah.
And then, am I correct, we're, we're on this newest one that we got that says future medical office? Um, that there's a lot in there, it looks like there's a lot in there that's not included in this?
That's my confusion, too?
Yeah, that's the car wash.
Car wash. This one's better as far as that visual.
Yeah, the car wash is, uh, still separately owned.
Okay.
So then this is just showing potential, future?
Yeah.
Okay.
This, this, this actually, um, when my client was working to develop it, um, you had the engineers sort of draw some schematics, and then, um, the architects put together some configurations for buildings. Some of those buildings are, obviously, um, out there, the, uh, medical office, urgent care, and then the second clinics being, um, constructed. And then the, the corner of Donald and Logan, uh, which, which is Lot Two in this, um, uh, subdivision we're asking you to approve, or this addition that we're asking you to approve. Um, that will also, um, be developed here, um, this spring.
Okay.
This is Flynn. Just wondering, and I know the Walgreens is there, but that is a pretty dense neighborhood behind Walgreens. Have those regis-residents in that area, um, expressed any type of negativity or concern about the development?
Um, I have not heard anything, and usually, um, we do hear of that. I mean, I think there was, um, generally, I think it was met with a lot of enthusiasm that, uh, Logan Plaza, which had become a little bit dilapidated and vacant, was gonna be repurposed and, um, hopefully refurbished, um, to help, help that area out there. I mean, I think Allen Hospital really is the anchor for that area of town. And certainly, um, in my viewpoint, that sixty-three, um, you know, the, um, refurbishment of sixty-three and the improvements along sixty-three really have helped. But, uh, we're, we're hoping that we're part of that with Allen. And, um, as you know, it's not a secret, some of those medical offices are, um, Allen's medical offices. And, uh, we, we hope, uh, they continue utilizing some of that land and space.
Well, I actually think a hotel would be superb out there. I know there is a Motel Six on the other side, but just for the, I've heard complaints of people with hospital and out of town, and, um, that would be a great addition out there. And I'm excited to see that area developed, you know? Growing up here in Waterloo, you saw Ben Franklin and all the places that used to be out there. And it, it's very encouraging that, um, your client wants to develop this area, and I think it's well-deserved for people in that area. Um, the only thing with the convenience gas station, I think it's far enough from Carver, but I would hate for it to become a hangout for middle school kids. You know, cause Carver is not too far down the road there.
I'm sure the gas station would hate that, too.
I know.
Yeah.
So...
Any other questions for Mr. Johnson?
Uh, this is just a quick question, but I know we like choices. Has Hy-Vee, because they have gas station, have they risen with any objection to that? I know, in a way, you can kind of look at theirs as a convenience gas station area.
Yeah, um, we haven't heard...
Competition is good.
Yeah, we haven't heard anything.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, any others? Is there anyone else in the room that would, I'm sorry, Eric, were you finished? I didn't mean to, if you weren't, I didn't mean to cut you off.
I'm finished unless you've got questions.
Okay. Is there anybody else in the room that would like to speak either for or against this item? Okay. Commissioners, remember if you make a motion, it covers the preliminary and the final plat, so...
I make a motion that with the staff recommendation to approve the preliminary and final plat of North Crossing for the following reasons. The request would not appear to have a negative impact. The request would, in fact, it would be positive. The request would not appear to have a negative impact with pedestrian traffic conditions. The request is in compliance with the future land use map and planned commercial. The request appears to meet the intention of the subdivision ordinance, and the only subject is that all questions and comments addressed and are taken care of by the city council before the final vote.
Second. I would...
Okay.
I want to ask a question for clarification. Um, it says here, I'm, I may, I may be misreading it, but the, the request would not... Okay, maybe I was misreading it. It was talking about, it would have a negative impact, but I think I was misreading what it said on the paper.
Okay, so that, that's your question answered?
Yeah, I think so.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, well, we don't need a roll call vote on this one, I don't think. All in favor of approving the request, subject to the developer addressing all the conditions that were in your, your packet, um, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say sign. The chair votes in favor. That's carried. Thank you. We have any discussion items?
I just want to add one thing about this, too. I want to confirm what, um, Commissioner Flynn said. I am super excited about this side of town moving ahead more in a positive way. So I just want to say thank you to the developer and to everybody that's worked on this. Five, five stars.
Would like to have seen it happen twenty years ago.
Right.
We got a new mayor.
Well, there was a problem with Logan Plaza, too.
I, I've lived here all my life, too, so I understand.
The owner.
Yeah, I know.
Um, any other discussion items?
Ben?
I was not excited about talking Hy-Vee Farms again, just...
Seeing, seeing none, uh, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Okay, we are done until next month. See you then.
Uh, that's February sixth, running.